Delegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'd like to welcome everybody back and wish all a Happy New Year. And with that, I will take nominations for President for the coming school year.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Miko.
I nominate George Grozan.
Second.
I'll nominate Carl Naso.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second that one. So we have two nominations on the floor, one for George Grozan and one for Mr. Naso. And we will take votes on the first one. So, Mr. Treasurer?
So this is for Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
No.
Mr. Grozan?
No.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
No.
Motion does not pass.
All right, please take a vote on the second.
This is for Mr. Naso. Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
No.
Mr. Miko?
No.
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Naso, if you may meet me at the podium for the Board of Office.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Naso, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Strongsville Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office and until your successor is chosen and qualified? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will, as President, I will take over the meeting. For this next, the next item on our agenda is the Board of Education Vice President. I'd like to nominate Duke, Colonel Duke Evans. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Um, okay.
Others?
Take, any others?
Okay. We didn't get seconds on those.
I don't think, I don't think we need seconds for, uh, well, do we have a second? Do we have a second for Duke?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Do we have a second for George?
Yes.
Excellent, so just make sure we follow all the rules. Um, with that, George, you can take the roll.
So the first vote is for Colonel Evans. Uh, Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, George. Or, excuse me, Duke. Congratulations, Duke.
Call me anything but late for dinner.
Good job, Colonel.
Colonel, if you want to get a.
Thank you, sir.
Very special.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Strongsville Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office and until your successor is chosen and qualified? If so, please say I do.
I do. Thank you.
Colonel?
Thanks.
All right, we have no public comment. We'll move on to appointment of liaisons to the committees for one-year terms. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, we have, now they're all listed there. They're the same as last year. So we have a vote.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nine is reaffirmation of the third-year term for Richard Miko's appointment of Player's Career Center. Doesn't require a vote.
Absolutely.
Board Committee Formation, Business Advisory Council. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Duke. Thank you, George. Okay, so this requires two positions?
Mr. Naso, that will be addressed under number 11. This is, since this is a new board committee, this is just a vote to approve a new board committee, the Board Facilities Committee.
Okay.
Membership will be in number 11.
Okay. Can I have a vote?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, number 11, Board Committees. The Finance Committee will be, well, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. The Finance Committee will be Duke and myself. The Policy Committee will be Jane and Richard. Facilities Committee will be George with an alternative, myself. Business Advisory Committee will be Richard and myself. Any discussion or concerns? If not, can we have a vote?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item 12 is Establishment of the Board of Education Meeting Dates. They're in the agenda. We've all seen them before. Item 13 is Roberts Rules. We use Roberts Rules when there's an absence of policy. So if there's any questions, we go back to that, that set of rules. Item 14, according to Section 3315, the Treasurer of the Board of Education has certified the number of pupils enrollment in Strongsville City Schools at 5,519 as of December 1st, 2018. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the service on be established by the Board of Education in amount of $20,000. Item 15, Recommendation by the Superintendent Authorizing Treasurer to A, invest available funds for 2019 in accordance with Board policy and establish administrative procedures. Results of such investments will be reported in a monthly financial report throughout the year. And B, to pay bills within the adoption of the appropriations for 2019. Item 19 is Legal Counsel Appointments. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, these, all the attorneys that are listed there, none of which are on retainer. They're used for various purposes. We use them whether it's labor relations, whether it's, whatever it is. We have a series of specialists that we use, legal firms that we use, for any issues that should arise. Any discussion? If not, can we have a vote?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Item 17, Board of Education Minutes. Provided to the Board of Education, members receive the minutes of previous meetings at the last two or three days in advance of the meetings. Authorization, authorization is given for the Board to waive reading of the minutes at the meetings. Resolution requests notification, item 18. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the resolution, requesting that the Board of Education be notified by the Tax Commissioner of any application for exemption from taxation for any property located within the district. This resolution is pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5715-27. Item 19, Tax Budget for the Fiscal Year 2020. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the tax budget for the fiscal year 2020 be adopted. That is in Exhibit B. Yep?
I do have a slight presentation on the tax budget. I'll be brief with it. So the tax budget is an annual budget that we have to have filed to the, to the county by the 15th of January of each year. And it begins the process of the tax collections for the current calendar year, which would be Collection 2020. It, the, the tax budget is a series of schedules where they list the division of taxes levied, the upcoming anticipated budget for the upcoming fiscal year, any unvoted debt obligations we have, voted debt, and any tax anticipation notes. So the first schedule is the taxes that we have currently levied. As you will see, we have, in the general fund, we have, overall, we have 81.78 mils levied. But their effective rates for residential is 38.9 mils and the effective rate for commercial is 42.16 in total. Overall, if collected at 100%, these levies would generate about $65.1 million. Again, that's if collected at 100%. Our collection rate is about 97%, 98 for residential. And commercials slightly less than that. Overall, compared tax budget to this year with the new reappraisals compared to last year, overall, the, the amount requested from Budget Commission is about 1% higher. So the only increase that we saw was from the, um, inside millage due to, due to the reappraisal and, and any new construction that came on as well. And due to House Bill 920, that's where the effective rates were shifted from the, the rate that was passed from the, from the original vote, the original vote of the millage. The second schedule is the anticipated budget for next year. It's still early, but it's a process to get us started. And that could be found in the exhibit. It was too many to list in the presentation. But it's taken from the, the annual budget where I do a five-year budget. And it's taken for the next year and added to the schedule in summary by Fund. Uh, three is any unvoted debt that we have. We have two in the general fund, which were issued in 2005 and 2008 for facilities improvements and energy conservation notes. Uh, currently outstanding at 1-1, these make up, uh, 1-1 of 2019. The outstanding balance is 2.4 million and the annual principal for these are 423,000. And then in Fund Three, we have for the Maraski improvements from 2005, a total outstanding obligation as of January 1st is 5.7 mils. And the annual principal and interest payments, $271,000. And these will be paid off in the year 2034. Schedule Four is voted debt. Uh, this is the $81 million debt issue to build a middle school and other, middle school, build a middle school renovation of the high school and other improvements that we've done throughout the district. As of January 1st, there's $70.8 million remaining on the, on the outstanding debt and the annual principal and interest payments is about $4.2 million. Then Schedule Five is tax anticipation notes, which we don't have any.
George, quick question from the.
Sure, no, please.
Where would the debt have been on the voted debt had you not taken the steps that you did to refinance some of it and to, like, I think we're ahead of the payoff, correct?
We are. Uh, we, we saved about 1 point, we saved about $1.4 million by paying it up, by making a small payment early. We, essentially, we refinanced a portion of it, of the, of the debt in, in years. I believe it was '24 through '28. And then we did an early repayment with some additional money that we had, uh, that was, that was collected within the Bon Retirement Service Fund. So essentially, we saved about, about $1.4 million to the taxpayers that, when the, when the debt is fully paid off.
Okay.
It's a reduction, it's a reduction of interest in those years.
That's what I'm getting at, through smart financial management on the part of our administration. We saved the taxpayers in this city $1.4 million. I hope they remember that during levy time.
George, can you go up one more slide? So this district spent $3.6 million for energy convers.
Conservation notes.
Conservation. And half of that budget was torn out when we redid the high school.
Mostly, yeah, right.
And that debt's not due for another five years.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it, thank you.
That's it, thank you. Thank you. Item 20, Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, the Board authorizes the Treasurer to invest up to a maximum of 40% of the district's interim funds in commercial paper notes in accordance with Board Policy 6144. District Credit Card Limits, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that per Board Policy 6423, the annual credit card limit per credit card holder and/or account be approved as listed in Exhibit C. That's in accordance with House, House Bill 312, correct?
Uh, crap, not sure which House. It was due to the recent law change.
The recent law change, okay.
I'm not sure if it was 312, but, uh, it was due to the new credit card legislation where, um, the, the governance of credit cards has changed, where the Board of Education has to identify the users that can use a credit card, the purpose, and the amounts.
Okay. Um, House Bill Nine, Ohio Public Records Training Certification, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that be, that we be in compliance with all Ohio Public Records status and the Board of Education requirements that the Treasurer, George Agnastu, be the designee on behalf of the Board for public records training. Broadcast of Board Meetings, in accordance with Board Policy 0169.3, Board authorizes the public broadcast of regular Board meetings during the calendar year. Resolution for Group Health Vision and Dental Insurance for Board Members. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that Board members may participate at their own expense in group health vision and dental insurance provided to district employees. Hiring, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the Strongsville Board of Education authorize the Superintendent to employ personnel on a temporary basis between Board meetings. Any discussion? This requires a vote. George?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
That brings us to the Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Mr. Naso. We have a variety of items for your consideration. But before we get to those, I just kind of want to give an overview as to the process and where we're at with regards to considering another levy. As we talked at our last Board meeting in December, we had eight focus groups in December of parents, community, and staff. We shared that, part of that feedback last month. And we had a long discussion about the benefits or the roadblocks to putting a levy on the ballot in May 2019 or November 2019. To actually put a levy back on a ballot is a two-step process. And today is the first step of that process. And if we want to be on and consider the May 2019 ballot, these things, this, this two-step process needs to be completed by early February. So tonight, we now, we have four recommendations here that we'll go through in a little more detail. But what these resolutions are asking for is giving George, as our Treasurer, permission to go to Cuyahoga County to certify the valuation of the city, which will get a, a dollar value of the revenue that would be generated by a levy. And so that is the first stage. The second stage would be actually voting for what levy would be on the ballot. What would be the timing, what would be the duration, and what would be the millage amount. So tonight's vote is simply giving George the authority to certify a variety of millage amounts. But in all of the resolutions, they're pretty consistent. The first thing that they're consistent on is based on the feedback we received from the focus groups and the discussion that we had at the Board meeting last month. George and I have discussed all of that and are recommending to the Board that in all four resolutions, that the levy be put on the May 2019 ballot for a variety of the reasons that were stated at the last meeting. The second thing that's in all of the resolutions is the duration of the levy. So in November, we put on a continuous levy. A continuous levy means a permanent levy. Once approved by the voters, it would be on the tax docket permanently. After spending time with our focus groups and, and hearing their input, it was pretty consistent feedback that, that we received from the focus groups, that they felt it was in the district's best interest to move away from a continuous levy, a permanent levy, and move to a five, a limited levy. Um, a limited operating levy. When you look at a limited operating levy, you have a choice from up to a maximum of five years. Based on that feedback and consideration of all of the factors, the recommendation in the resolutions for all of them is a five-year limited levy. So you'll see in all four resolutions, it's May 2019, it's a five-year limited levy based on the focus group feedback. Just as a matter of course, we did take a lot of time to look at, you know, this current levy, but also look long-term. We have one existing five-year limited levy for the district. It started in, from the 2002 levy. So that will be up for renewal in 2022. It was just renewed in 2016. So as we consider all of these decisions, we also have to look at the big picture and understand that, yes, we are recommending in these resolutions a five-year limited levy. That will put two five-year limited levies, shouldn't this levy pass, on our tax docket. The reason for the four separate resolutions is because as we talk to our focus groups, from the parents to the community, to the, to the staff, there was not consistent feedback on the millage rate. We had feedback from the groups that stated that we've, they believe that we should keep the millage rate the same. You asked for 7.9 mils in November, you should stay consistent with 7.9 mils in the next levy. We received feedback that you should, we should lower the millage rate. We should take into consideration possibly making continued efficiencies, those difficult decisions to continue to reduce cost, continue to look at what we can do as prudently as possible and go for a lower millage rate. And so that's why we have up for consideration four resolutions for you. The four resolutions are just separated by the millage rate. One is for 6.5 mils, one is for 6.9 mils, one is for 7.5 mils, and the fourth is for 7.9 mils. Now, it's also important to note that to have a vote at the January 24th meeting on exactly what would be put on the ballot is specifically tied to what you approve tonight. So let's first say, for example, you just considered these four millage rates. And we get to the next meeting and somebody says, well, hey, I'd really like to consider 6.7 mils. It starts the process over. George would have to get authority to certify 6.7 mils. We would get that. We would have to come back at a separate time to vote on that millage. So, um, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that process. And there are two types of requirements. This vote, simply because it's to certify, is required a majority vote of the Board. As we get to the actual levy ballot, which would be the second step, that requires two-thirds of the Board. Any questions before we go through the resolution?
So we have to make a decision right now if we want 6.5, 6.9, 7.5, or 7.9?
That's a great question, Mr. Grozan. No, you do not have to make a decision now.
Thank you.
All you're doing today, your vote, I'll use it as an example, the first resolution. If the Board votes yes for the 6.5 mil levy, all that's saying to George is go find out how much revenue would be generated from a 6.5 mil levy. On the Jan, if, if we continue with the pattern of the next Board meeting would be the official vote, January 24th would be the time where you'd officially vote on what's going to be the next levy.
Okay.
So essentially, if we can, we can approve all of these resolutions, right? And that's the intent. And then we will certify them all. We'll get them certified. That'll give us to the next Board meeting, unless there's one that's completely unacceptable, that we're going to certify a number of different resolutions, all of which George will then take, it's certified by the county. It'll determine the exact amount based on the new valuations of the money that it'll generate. Well, now we're working off estimates after, you know, once George submits these, we'll have exact data for the amount of money that they'll generate.
Does it cost us anything to get certification for multiples?
No.
Okay, so if we did 15 different ones, they don't charge us, or, okay.
They wouldn't charge us, but they wouldn't be happy either.
Well, I don't intend that. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. No, they, they're, that was, no joke, but they don't, they don't charge, they don't charge us. I would email them the resolutions, then they would email me back a one-pager. So we would have a one-page with, with the information for each, with each amount. And then on the next step, we would pick, then on the next Board meeting, we would pick one of those if we choose to, to make the recommendation for the Board vote. And then for the others, we would do another vote to rescind those other certifications.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
Is, is the 24th the last date available to make the May ballot?
No, it's, uh, February 6th at 4:00, 4:00 PM. So we could have a special meeting if we need a meeting in between that time.
Okay, so I will go through the resolutions. And again, all of the resolutions are May 2019, five-year limited operating levy with the millage being the difference. So under number one, a resolution of the necessity requesting an additional 6.5 mil five-year operating levy. A resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional tax for the purpose of current expenses and requesting the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer to certify the total current tax valuation of the school district and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by an additional 6.5 mil operating levy for a period of five years pursuant to the applicable sections of the Ohio Revised Code as stated in Exhibit D.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two is a resolution of the necessity requesting an additional 6.9 mil five-year operating levy as found in Exhibit E.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. George, can you take, roll?
Yep, Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Gro, Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under A3, a resolution of necessity requesting an additional 7.5 mil five-year operating levy as found in Exhibit F.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
George, take roll.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Naso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, A4, Resolution of Necessity Requesting an Additional 7.9 mil five-year operating levy as found in Exhibit G.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
George, take roll?
Well, hang on, I have a comment.
Okay.
Just for the folks that have the interest to watch and of course, our audience, I think it's important for everybody to know that this is a very carefully considered decision by this Board, by this administration. We don't just willy-nilly come to the public and say, we want to take more money out of your pockets, because it's our pockets too. We live here. And we understand, I'm speaking for the Board. If anybody disagrees, I don't mean to speak for you guys. I'm sure you'll say something, but. I'm sure you'll say something, but we understand that this is an important and a very serious step. We came to the public last year with a 7.9 levy, looking for a little money extra to be able to make it last through another seven or eight years, so we didn't have to come back to the taxpayers every five years or every three years and run another levy campaign and have you overwhelmed with requests for money from the schools. The situation we're in now is that we are gonna have to come back to you in four years, three years, four years, with not only renewal, but another, if this one passes in May, a request for additional funds or a renewal of this, this funds. It's our intention, at least it's my intention, that we replace what was taken by the state. We've said that a million times here. We lost $9 million to the Cleveland Clinic and to the state of Ohio, took back our TPP funding. That would keep us whole, but it doesn't account for the increased costs of utilities, of people. And yes, our salaries are competitive, but they're not excessive for any of our teachers. It just keeps us able to keep our head above water. And even if these lower levy amounts pass, it's still gonna require cuts to the programs that our kids enjoy and the opportunities that make them competitive for their secondary education in universities and in careers. So, we take this very seriously. And I would hope that the community would remember that they elected us because they trusted our judgment to, as a board, make the best decisions for not only the kids, but for the taxpayers, who do have a voice in this, and that they'll give very careful consideration to approving what we ask for.
Thank you, Duke.
Um, take a roll?
7.9.
7.9?
Colonel Evans?
No.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
No.
Mr. Miko?
No.
Mr. Neso?
Well, um... It's already failed, so...
No.
Motion does not pass.
Mr. Neso, even though the superintendent report continues, I do wanna turn it over to you. These were our four recommendations. If there's other considerations for millage amounts, this would be the time to discuss those as a board.
Mr. Neso, if I could?
Yep.
Me and Mr. Miko had a really good conversation. And that conversation began with, you know, taxpayers, what's affordable, what's not affordable per $100,000 in home value. And I'd like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Miko and just have him speak for a few minutes.
Thank you, George. I mean, at this point, these votes, I look at it as providing the board and the administration with a menu of options. It's, uh, the steps we have to go through, there's still work to be done, there's still deliberation to be done. I'd like to suggest that we add three more values, and that'd be five, five and a half, six. George has already confirmed that there is no additional fee to that. One of the things that I've been thinking about since the failure is balancing all the arguments for the right amount with winning. And at the end of the day, we have to respond to the customer, so I would like to have that ability to add to that menu. So, I don't normally do this, but do I have to make them separate, or can I make one motion? I'll make a separate one. So, I make a motion that we have a resolution of necessity requesting an additional six mil five-year operating levy and copy the verbiage that already exists.
And George, just from my awareness, once you receive your one page, that will come to the board so where we can see not only what the millage rate will do for us in the school district, but also what it would cost per $100,000 for the residents of Strongsville.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll second Richard's motion.
Have a vote?
Um, to be clear, this is for a six mil, five-year operating levy. 6.0, 6.0...
Correct.
...mil operating, five-year operating levy. So, Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, again.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosen?
Yes. Richard, your second one?
So, I make a motion, a resolution of necessity requesting an additional six...
No.
No.
Five.
Five.
Subtracting in the wrong direction. 5.5 mil, five-year operating levy, using the existing language.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Vote?
Okay. To be clear, this is a, um, 5.0, five-year...
5.5.
5.5.
Oh, 5.5.
That's not so clear.
Sorry.
5.5.
So, to repeat, this is a five-year, 5.5 mil operating levy. Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
And then, I make a motion for a resolution of necessity requesting an additional five mil, five-year operating levy, following the existing language.
I'll second.
Can I vote?
Yep. And to repeat, this is a five-year, 5.0 operating levy. Uh, Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, if I may?
I would like, I would like to note that, once we get the data on any two or three of these, that the math's fairly easy. So, if we want any other iterations, I think we can pretty much do the math on the napkin if we have to. So, I don't think we need any more iterations, do we?
We don't need any more iterations unless there's an iteration that you like, and then, there would have to be a special meeting to approve that.
Okay.
Mr. Neso?
Yep.
So, and again, the purpose of this is to avoid having to do a second meeting or a special meeting to have all the options available to us. And I will echo Colonel Evans' comments. What we're doing is balancing a amount that we think we can pass, being very honest and being very upfront with the electorate, that the smaller the amount is upfront, it necessitates a secondary ask at a later time, and it'll be sooner. But I wanna, I think it's important that we have those options to consider.
Yep. It also, I mean, in, in the more of these that we have, if we lower the number, I mean, i- if we get, if the number becomes so low that it requires us to go right back out, right? Then, I don't think we're really doing a service. I don't think any of these are that low that that's a problem. But I mean, the, the problem would be if you, if you wanted to go with a bunch of real little ones and just keep churning it, it, it absorbs so much bandwidth of the administration to keep going through that cycle on a rapid basis, that it's difficult to then focus on process improvement. So, we've gotta kinda, there's a, there's a, there's a balance between the bandwidth of being able to do these, obviously, the, the desire or the ability of the taxpayer to, to pay it and our likelihood for success. So, we, I think we got a good look here, we got a lot of different numbers. Uh, we'll have a lot of different looks at it, and we can, we can go at it. And we've got a couple of weeks to, to figure out where we wanna land. How long does it take to turn these around?
I'm gonna submit them to the county tomorrow and Monday, once I get my resolution numbers. And then, hopefully, they get them back to me within a couple of days.
Okay, excellent, okay.
Mr. Neso, one other thing to note is that with the reappraisal of properties in January, it has changed the millage amount as well. And so, that's why if you're thinking, you know, the 7.9 was high, well, it was based on last year's valuations. They're different this year, and so, it allows it to be a lower millage rate to a certain extent.
Thank you.
And Mr. Neso, just to, just to recap, 6.5, 6.9, 7.5 certified, 7.9 failed, and then, the additional 6.0, 5.5, and 5.0.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
With your permission, I'll move on in the agenda?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, moving on, under Business Services, we have one item for your consideration for transportation of non-public students. Be it resolved upon my recommendation that school bus transportation for the listed students be declared impractical. Be it further resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education, in lieu of providing transportation, pays parents of students attending these schools, and the reimbursement will be based on the amount allotted by the state and the schools and the students are listed below. Any questions on Business Services? Uh, under C, Student Services, be it resolved upon my recommendation that we enter into a contract with Kids Link Neuro-Behavioral Center for placement of a student with disabilities for the 1819 school year at a cost of $78,000 per year, prorated for a start date of January 7th, 2019, per the attached exhibit, which is in Exhibit H. Any questions on that?
No, I'd just like to point out that, I mean, we, we fully understand it's the right thing to do, it's what we have to do, it's the best needs of the child. But I mean, it, it should be noted that this is $78,000 of, of, of expense to the district for one single student. So, when they, when you, when you, when people come, when we have comments about, well, enrollment's going down, which really, enrollment is coming down, but we're getting more and more, because of the nature, it just, it just happens to be, because we're very good at this with our special needs children, that we're getting more and more of these, and they're very expensive. And the, and the state's supposed to reimburse us over a certain amount of money that we spend. Um, and they, they frequently, we get only a fraction of that reimbursement. So, although we're mandated to pay it, it's an unfunded mandate, and we have to absorb the cost. The taxpayers have to absorb the cost. We do it because it's the right thing to do, and we'll always do it in whatever in the best interest. But I just wanted to point out that it's $78,000 for one student.
Correct. And that concludes my report, Mr. Neso.
Thank you. Um, that brings us to the consent calendar, item 27. Can I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. This is the adoption of all items with an asterisk in a single vote. Any discussion, we have no modific, well, nope, those were seeing individual votes. We have no modification to any asterisk items, any discussion on any of the asterisk items.
Mr. Neso?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to comment, we are approving the credit cards. The Policy Committee spent a inordinate amount of time on those, on that policy to make sure it gave us the, the flexibility needed so that we could operate the, the business of the school district, but at the same time, put in reasonable, and I would think conservative protections that, that the taxpayers' money is protected. And those, you know, those limits are $5,000 for most, for most instances. The cards for, that we use for gas is a little higher, 'cause, because you can easily spend that much on gas in one billing cycle. But they are very, they're very reasonable, they're conservative, and I think it's important that we highlight that.
We'll give you credit for that.
Can we approve this without having...
George, can you take a vote?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
This is the second, item 28, Board Bylaws and Policies. This is the second reading for a lot of, for many, many different policies, most of which are just legal changes or small, not, not anything real too significant in any of the changes, but we'll review them, and we'll get a, on the third reading, the Policy Committee will give us an update on some of the more significant ones. That gets us to item 29, Board of Education Other. Do we have any other tonight?
Uh, yes, we have the Rockin' at the Rec Dance. Um, thank you to the PTA. It is tomorrow at the Rec Center from 6:30 to 9:00 for 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders.
Excellent.
Oh, and on the 23rd, if you have any interest, our Strongsville hockey team will be skating and playing a game at the Q. Um, there are discount tickets, so if you have a desire to come down and watch them play, and then, watch the Monsters play right after, please come down and root on our Strongsville Mustangs.
Alright.
And they're doing a phenomenal job this year. They are really doing a great job this year.
Great. We also, I'll, I'll bring up one, and we've got the, the Boosters fundraiser is February 9th. Tickets are still available, you can go to the website and get those tickets. It's, uh, I think it's a night at the races type event.
Yeah.
It's always a, a good event, and it's fun. I'd like to give a little shout-out to our new athletic director, Denny Ziegler started. Uh, he's jumping in with both feet. Uh, I think if you're at any of the games or any, any of the competitions, and you look for him, he looks a lot like his brother PJ, who's on Fox 8 News. So, just look for him, and you'll find him. Uh, he's an exciting guy, he's got a lot of energy. Uh, you know, a three-sport athlete in high school, two-sport athlete in college, with a lot of great ideas coming from a great program that he built from nothing to quite a bit. So, I'm looking forward to the improvements he's gonna make. Uh, we're, we're just excited about that.
What time is the Boosters?
Six to midnight?
Yeah, six to midnight.
Got it.
I have another as well. The Strongsville Historical Society has their annual soup supper at the Rec Center on Tuesday, January 26th, no, 22nd, sorry, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Tickets are $10, so if you're interested, you can contact me or the Historical Society. And then, I wanted to make mention of the Wizards basketball, um, team that is coming to Strongsville High School on January 31st at 7:00 p.m. It'd be a fun night for, they're kinda like the Harlem Globetrotters, but better. So, um, if you have nothing going on that night, we'd appreciate you coming out and having a good time at the high school. Tickets can be purchased on the website. I know I already got mine.
Good job. And they are also at our school buildings. And I also have to say that there will be some celebrity guests from our own Strongsville City School staff. So, we have teachers, administrators, our own Mr. Reba will be participating as players, so.
Maybe our new athletic director will help.
Yeah, yeah. That's right.
We're gonna get a lot of subs.
I think he played basketball in college, so I think he's ready to go.
Who, me?
Not you. Tuba, man.
Seventh, seventh grade, man.
Your boys are pretty good.
Yeah, they do alright.
Mr. Neso?
Mm-hmm.
Just a few quickies. January 16th is the High School Polaris Day. So, if there are any high school students who wanna visit Polaris, that's January 16th in the afternoon. And then, I do wanna make sure to remind everyone that January 17th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., is the Polaris Open House. Uh, that's for both high school students and adult learners. Um, all the programs will be there, the, the teachers, the instructors will be there. So, if you have any interest, Thursday, January 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00, is a great time to come visit Polaris. You can sample the, the culinary program. I don't know if they're gonna give haircuts from the cosmetology program, but they could. But it's a great way to learn about Polaris. Um, and then, I had two other things for consideration. I was talking with Cameron about this. We had therapy dogs at the high school during the last testing cycle. And on the one hand, it sounds nice to have therapy dogs and bubble wrap and crayons and things like that to help with the stress of, uh, testing. But it seems that it might behoove us to take some time and say, what, what can we do ahead of the, ahead of the time? It seems like these finals and all of that, it's becoming more and more stressful. And we're the adults who create these tests, and we create that environment. So, I wanted to throw that out for consideration, that instead of having to bring therapy dogs into the high school because of the stress of testing, maybe we should take a look at what's going on that testing has become so stressful for our students.
Maybe we just need to have tougher kids.
Again, I think that might be something for us to consider.
Come on.
Um... But I, I do think, if you look at, if you do look at psychological reports, et cetera, that are coming out, kids are more stressed today than they have been in years past. And as the adults, I think it's worthwhile for us to consider that. It's not something to decide today, but, um, June, we have another chance. So, and then, the last one for the board's consideration, I was thinking about our Policy Committee, and we are gonna be considering the, um, the policy... and we are gonna be considering the, um, the policy allowing students that aren't in our schools to come and do, uh, different curricular programs. And I'd like to suggest that we, uh, make that, uh, something for the board to just consider. I think it'd just, it's something the board is gonna have to consider anyways. There's a lot of opinions on that, and I think it's gonna end up being a board, a board discussion anyway, so. I would like to, I'd like us to just consider it as a board, instead of sending it to the Policy Committee.
Okay, we can add it as an agenda item for a discussion. Prior, why don't we do it prior to your Policy Committee, so you have input from the board?
Well, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is the board, the, there's, there's a lot of divergent opinion on it, and it's gonna come to the board as a whole regardless.
Okay.
Um, we discussed it last time, and the consensus was that this is gonna be something all five board members are gonna discuss anyways. So ultimately, I wanna save an evening, um, of the Policy Committee.
Okay.
So, Mr. Neso, if you remember, the international travel policy?
Yep.
We just did the readings and discussion as a board, so that's what Mr. Miko's recommending, is we just take care of that as a full board.
Okay. Sounds good.
And so I'll, with consensus from the board?
Yes.
I'll put that on a future agenda.
And we'll cancel the upcoming policy meeting.
Correct. Okay. By the nods of the heads, I think we're good to go with it.
And then I have one last announcement, and it's the most important one. I am happy to report that I've been notified that the girls' swim team won the, uh, GCC, uh, contest, and the boys came in third place.
That's great.
Congratulations to all the swimmers.
Excellent. Any other others? Excellent. Meeting notice, the next regular board meeting will be July twenty-fourth, uh, at seven o'clock, right here. Uh, we do have meeting for, uh, need for executive session tonight.
To prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? Nope. Uh, George, take a roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Answer an executive session at?
Eight oh five. There won't be any business afterwards.